We will call together the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners regular agenda session for March 14, 2024. I will call on Commissioner Faircloth to give us the invocation and the pledge.
Let's stay in honor-gotten country. Once again, we come into the presence of you and our constituents. We ask that our deliberations be true and honest and to the best of our ability and to the best interest of our people as we go. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. That will take us to the approval of the agenda. We will possibly add a closed session. Not sure that we need it. We're waiting on some further information, but we're going to actually have it on the agenda for a closed session, just in case. So if I can get approval of the agenda with that addition... Oh, Mr. Mayor, do you got anything to talk?
No, other than the closed session.
Okay. If that, I'll take a motion for approve the agenda.
Yes.
They're moving in second. All those in favor?
Unanneled.
Alright, that would take us to our presentation. We hadn't seen them in a while. And our call on the county manager for the capital planning models presented by D E C Associates.
Yes, today we're going to go over the capital planning models, since we have so many projects that... and the potential that we will have to issue, go to the L G C for debt funding or debt issuance. We have Doug Carter here. He's the president and managing director of D E C and Associates, and they've been our financial advisors for several years. They will present our capital debt models and answering questions that you may have.
Good. Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Glad to see you.
Good to see you.
The sun over there, too.
I'm here with my business associate.
Oh, the business associate came today.
Yeah. He'll be presenting the models when they come. I have given him a warning. He's graduated from Carolina.
Oh.
They're currently in the middle of a ball.
They're playing right there.
They're on halftime, thank goodness, so they'll be trying to present.
What's the score? I didn't get this here.
Up seventeen.
Okay.
Carolina, Dallas. Pardon?
The real game starts at seven, but go ahead.
Exactly.
There you go. You... up in the chair. It starts at seven, right? Right? The real game starts at seven, right?
Gotcha.
Alright.
Okay, we're here today to look at the models. There's not going to be a lot before the models, but we're just going to do a little introduction. We'll do a little introduction and background. We're going to talk a little bit more about the Capital Investment Fund and how it operates. Then we're going to review... You maintain inside your C I F and separate funds three financial and affordability models, and we will do them in the order that you see presented here, which is the classic order we've done in the past. And then we'll talk about moving forward and next steps, as the manager mentioned earlier. As you'll remember, you set up the fund, the C I F, I'll use the abbreviation, it's shorter, and we move faster, in 2018. And so the fund has been operating for six fiscal years, and it's had some pretty incredible performance that you'll see in a bit. That, in our opinion, moved the county to the highest level of capital affordability planning. Your model looks very similar to the City of Charlotte's model, as an example, who's also like ours. Theirs looks just like yours.
Okay. I'm just making sure that's what we were saying.
Yeah, theirs looks just like yours. As I said earlier, there are three distinct entities inside the affordability, general government, public schools, and the Crown Center. We're going to review each entity today. I think the good news is, all three of the models have capacities. Are they enough is always the question, but they certainly have capacities and larger capacities than we showed you or that you saw the last time that we were here. And then basically after today's review and your questions and answers, we'll continue to work towards moving to get some of these projects financed, the important ones we know. You guys have seen these flow charts a number of times. I think the important thing about this flow chart is there's one place where all the money comes in and all the money goes out. And so it is the central place to trace what happens in resources available for debt and pay-go. You don't borrow it all, and where it goes to. And then basically, after it goes in and goes around this way, you have new capacity if we have it accounted for or planned for spending the money in the future. So the real question is, is how do you create additional capacity? What happens? And I'm going to give you some specific identifiers related to Cumberland County as we go through this. First, we have the projected revenues. We have inside each model their own revenue sources that we know. The general government has a large contribution from the general fund. It has investment earnings, things of that nature. The school models have all the sales taxes, all the money that is set aside for capital projects out of the sales taxes. They have lottery money, things of that nature. And then, of course, in the Crown Center model, we have all of the revenues that come in, and you'll see those a little bit more individually, both from the taxes that operate inside that model, and we'll look at the potential for excess revenues under the operations of the new Crown Center. And once they go in, we have projected expenditures. What would happen to make this model vary or change? The big one is projects move slowly. This financial model, because it has all the revenues for capital and all the expenditures for capital, as with any model, if a project moves more slowly, it gives you capacity. Now, the other issue that we've dealt with in the past is, is we also have to deal with inflation.
Right, and the cost, rather, yeah.
That's correct. Inflation in costs. Now, I'm seeing a levelizing in that personally with a number of the folks I've talked to, if they're architects or engineers in here today, please agree with me. We're seeing a leveling of what happened during the COVID time period and directly thereafter. Will it ever go back to where it was in 2016, '17?
No.
Who knows? We can always hope.
No.
We can always hope.
Hope brings you torment.
What happens, though, and you see it, when we drove in this morning, you just feel growth in this county. I mean, there's traffic. There's new construction. You just feel it. I'll tell you another statistic I just read on the way up here. The Census just released state and county populations and growth since 2020. You guys had shown the previous year a slight diminishment in growth based upon census data. This year, you're up, and in fact, higher than you were in the year before 2023, which would have been 2021.
We're now the fifth-largest county over Durham.
That's correct. That's correct. So, good things you see both from the census and good things you see just driving around the city and the county. You just feel it. So projects move more slowly. Actual debt costs lower than projection helps the model. We've told you this a number of times, but I know some of you haven't been on the county commission as long as others. We use what we call prudently conservative estimates on debt cost. Now, we've been told by this manager specifically and managers that preceded him that we're never to bring a debt issue whose interest rate is higher than what the model showed, because if you do, what happens?
You get fined.
You hurt. Oh, you're putting me in a good mood. We generally project at a goodly higher level than what you would see in current markets. So when the debt actually comes to market, that improves the model because you have actuals rather than projections. Give you an example. If you issued a 20-year bond today in the fashion that they're issued in the state of North Carolina, level principal, unlike a mortgage, which is a level payment. If you issued 20-year debt today, you'd be probably breaking 350. So you would slide in under 350. A year ago, you would have been lucky to slide in under four. So we're seeing improvements in fixed-rate markets. The municipal markets are seeing improvements more than we're seeing in the federal issuances. That has to deal in some measure with issuance volumes, things of that nature, but in a larger sense, it's also about credit quality, which is why you always want to be high credit quality for the interest rate. So think a little less than 350. Today, it changes. So basically, we've projected higher than that in the model, so you can gain new capacity because actual is better than projected. You have actual revenues that are higher than projections. You've been a beneficiary of that in the last several years, and you're going to see that when you see the models. We have rapid debt reduction. We, in 10 years, on a level P 20-year debt, in 10 years, half your debt is paid off. So that's why every 10th year out of the revenues you dedicate, every 10th year, you're going to build in 50% more capacity based upon the size of that issue. Then there can be other factors that help with that that I will deal with. There's several. And then finally, have you met your fund balance goal? Inside the affordability model, we have debt targets, so that if you have a downturn in the future economy and we had some slowing in revenues, you would be able to weather that because you have an adequate fund balance. The goal is to never ask the general fund to do more, but to operate inside the revenues that are assigned to this model, to the C I F from the general fund and other sources. So with that, I'm going to ask Andrew to come up and go through the three models. The manager also said we had to be done in 13 minutes, and he's watching it while...
Right, and you want to be fired, yeah.
And I'm going to stand here because I generally tend to add something as we go along.
As we jump into these models, I really wanted to go back and look at some of what Doug was saying here, especially on your general model. Y'all have a policy that when your unassigned fund balance hits a certain level, year over year, through an action of the board, you're able to move monies from the unassigned fund balance into the capital fund. That has made some great new capacity into the model. Over three fiscal years, y'all transferred about $116 million from the unassigned fund balance into the capital fund, which helps support the projects that we're going to see and requires y'all not to add any annual monies from the general fund coming over every year. So these last few years, we've had especially sales tax being higher than projected during the COVID time period, where we all thought everything was going to crash, but ended up what happened was everyone stayed home and bought stuff on Amazon and bought stuff and worked on their house. And so sales tax has basically gone up, you know, year over year. And so I just wanted to throw that out there as well. So I think I'll need to... And I know there's a lot of numbers on the page. I'll try to zoom in as much as possible.
We got them in front of us.
Okay, y'all got some frantic, obviously. Well, perfect. Well, I'm going to go back to my old teacher days. I like to point and stand up in front of the screen and do stuff. So as we all know, as Doug said, we start with the revenues. We have our revenues on the left-hand side. You'll see, these are the three years I was talking about. The revenues were much higher as they came in than what we had projected. But currently, there's about, it's just under $17 million coming over from the general fund every year to support this. And then there's some other revenues, and of course, as I said, the money's coming over from the unassigned fund balances. Really helpful, you'll see, the fund balance has grown over these past few years. However, we have a big column of red over here, right? And so these are the years where your revenues do not meet your expenses. But because we have a fund balance now, we're able to start shaven off those years, so that where our spikes in costs do not meet our revenues, we're not having to add additional revenues. We're able to use the fund balance that we're packing away now. So if we rob this fund, we may not be able to do some of these other numbers. So we need to keep our fund balance relatively high, knowing that we're going to be using it into the future. And so the last column is really the most important, I think, when it really comes down to everything. It's the coverage column. And what that means is, at the end of the year, we have a .25 coverage we're looking at. And that's my moniker, as I say, how low can you go before you say no? And you can't add any more to the thing. So you see, our coverage remains very strong until we get down, really down here towards the end, when everything is finally finished here. Now, as Doug said, we're also using pretty conservative interest rates. So we have 5% interest rates in here. And as he said, we're currently looking at about 3.5. That gives us a cushion of about 1.5% over current markets. And we believe that's prudent. As we issue these, we put the final numbers in, issue it better than what our projections were, right? And thus, it will give us additional capacity into the model. And so what projects do we currently have? Right now, we've currently got about $316 million in additional projects coming up. That includes Graves Creek Water, the General Services Parking Deck, which is kind of the Phase One of the General Services Center, which will be done in tandem with the Crown Center, the new Crown Center. There is a project for the Home Support Center. Currently, we have it in as pay-go, but we can look at as pay-go war debt any time that we like. There is the General Services Center, which will come a couple of years after the parking deck. We've got to get the parking deck in and operational and places people park, so that we can then build the next part of the General Services Center. We have the expansion of the courthouse coming in 2028. And then this water expansion that's coming about 10 years after is probably our 2038 project we're looking out there for expansion of water. And so the model currently shows that we can support this $316 million. We do get some red numbers here that are well, you know, 2045. As we start putting the final numbers in, this is going to get better than that. So we still feel good that even though this last year shows us going right below our coverage, that we've got, what, 20-something years to get there. So, you know, this is all projection here. Go ahead.
I will say one of the things, County Commissioners, the manager feels, as do we, that there's going to potentially be some grants that come in here, hopefully. We really hope for the water projects. And so we have not booked any of those. We have not shown any of those. To the extent that they come, we will do that. But that is not currently in here now.
Correct. So that's our additional padding we have in the model, where until we get grants in hand and know that we have them, we're not counting any chickens or eggs before they're hatched and such. So this is the current general government model. As Doug says, some of these projects have been pushed into the future from our originals, so the model got better. We're able to do a little bit more than what we showed before. But everything seems to be very good. You know, we're working on, you know, on model projections for this current year. You know, we expect to beat the budgetary numbers that were in there, so we hope. When we tick and tie with the caper at the end of each fiscal year, we'll be able to show a little bit rosier picture than what we have here. Any questions currently?
Anybody got any questions? I've got, okay, so I see the 45 for three for the Graves Creek, right? And then I see the 70 million for the water expansion. Is that county-wide? Is that what we... Is that what that is?
That's county-wide, boy.
Okay. And then the courthouse, is that this courthouse? Or is that the old courthouse?
That's the renovation from this courthouse, after the General Government Services Center.
78 million to renovate this courthouse?
That's what I'm saying. 78, that's, I mean...
That was the number that was previously included that we're looking at.
Yeah, because I mean, 78 million is a lot of money to renovate. I mean, I could build, build a courthouse, Canada, for almost 78 million dollars. That's why I'm, that was, that was, I don't know how we came up with that number. That's, I don't know. 78 million is just a lot for renovation for this courthouse. We're going, we'll move, which takes away the fifth floor, the third floor, the fourth floor, the third floor, and the basement. And so, which leaves...
We're going to refine that number. That's one, that's been a little...
We did a long term.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess, well, let me see. I guess it's...
And we just recently completed, or soon to completed, the space needs study for the new government services building. So that number will probably be modified for in the future.
Or does that include the admin building? Because if it's not admin building, it's not on there.
No, it does include the admin building. It does include that.
So where is it?
Is that not the General Services Building?
That's the General Services, 89.
Yeah. The admin building and the General Services Building, the same building?
Yeah, that's the 89th one, six million.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, you know, we have talked, I know for at least 16 years, about the historic courthouse. I mean, can this, can it be in conjunction with something else? Because we're going to be pulling, in the General Services Building, we have county staff that's going to be in that building, that's currently in that building, that's going to be coming along. But that building needs some tender love and care. It is probably the most historic building in the entire county. Can it be added to one of these future projects?
We'll more likely have a closed session today, and in that, I'll provide, we'll be evaluating, reallocating some of these numbers, and we'll have D E C come back, and that may be one of the new projects that we may allocate the funds to.
Thank you.
Fantastic. So before we move on to another model, everyone go to the general.
Fantastic. We're almost 13 minutes in now. I'm getting close.
Very good.
So we'll move, I guess we'll move to schools next. The schools model is supported by the school sales tax and lottery funds that are coming in. And so you'll see those revenues here. They, you know, bumped around just a little bit. This is our budget number. You know, we think that's a little low, but then when we get this year's final number, you'll see we project off of that. It's around the 20-ish million dollar mark. There is currently issued debt service. Schools are currently paying. And then you'll see there's a goodly amount of between $10 and $40 million a pay-go that's going to them for their school capital outlay every year. So currently, there's much more pay-go, about double the pay-go going than what's debt-supported. And so the last plan we were looking at was about the 163.7 million, 163.7. And so this model shows if we issue that in 2025, the later half of 2025, so next year after July, this will be the debt service on 163.7 million. And the model shows we would need some additional funding of around $600,000 a year, growing a little bit, in order to keep our coverages, again, to the .25. Our trough is about a .39 down here. So we feel we could get away with about $600,000 in additional revenue and still keep this fund healthy. But it would not support it without some additional revenue coming in.
Mr. Chairman, one other comment I want to make. When you see totaling this plan, that's always borrowed. If you look here and go out 10 years, you've got in the range of 130 million that's going to be invested in the schools out of this model in addition to 163. So in that 10-year period, between what's coming out, the pay-go projects of the school board and the new debt, it'll be in the 300-million-ish range rather than 163. 163. You all, all our larger clients, do a really good job in this pay-go column compared to others that we see. So that is, if you added that up for 10 years and added it back to 163, it would be in the range of 300 million.
And as this debt's rolled off, we're doing the same thing as we did in the C I F?
Yeah, so this all churns back into the fund, so we're going to have a lot of payoff until we get to this.
Right, to that 1 billion, yeah.
And all that goes right back in this fund, does not leak over into operations.
Right, okay.
Guys, in the old days, when you had all of this in the general fund, when the debt went down, that just got gobbled up by the operating fund.
Yeah, to the general.
That's right. Now, it stays within your capital fund, and you don't reorient capital money to operating money. That's the beauty of the model. And look at it when you, when we have the new pay-go and debt service and the new... Imagine in the next 10 years after this, after we issue the 163, how much capacity you're going to do in payoff of debt simply because you've got a larger amount outstanding. So over the years, the model will become more powerful just because of how it operates.
Gotcha. Correct. And again, when you look at these models, when the red numbers start going away and fund balance starts growing again, it's at about this time view, we'll probably issue another large tranche. But till then, we're kind of somewhat tapped out. So we will issue the 164 in 2025, and then about 2034, 35, we could do our next larger issuance. So, you know, that has a...
And you all will remember that by management's request, y'all see these models every year.
That's right.
And so every year, you're going to see how the model progresses. And what we've been able to show you every year is it has had a positive progression because of the prudent nature of how it works and how the assumptions are made inside the model.
Questions on the school model? The third model of the county is the Crown Center, because it operates as an enterprise fund and thus has its own revenues and expenditures that churn in its fund. This one does include operations unlike some of the other models we have, obviously, because we have to pay for all of those from the revenues, the food and beverage tax, and the new operating revenues that we get off a new facility and operating revenues from the other facility. So this is all totally supported by the hotel, motel tax and food and beverage tax and the revenues of the facilities themselves. There is no other general fund support in this current model. So as you'll see here, we've got, you know, 13, 14, until the new, the new Crown Center comes on and we start generating some revenue there, we were, you know, we're operating about 13 or 14 million dollars. That'll jump up through the operations of the facility. You'll see our current debt service runs out in 2027. That's the, so this was the old debt service on the facility. It was before. We had another renovations facility come up. So 2027 is when that goes off. If we issue the Crown Center at the 145 million-dollar total project size by the end of this year, this is our estimate of the debt service. We will do, on this particular facility, we'll probably do two years interest only before we start paying that principal, because we want the facility and the ground before we're paying principal on it and it's generating revenues to pay that. So we're going to do a two-year interest only on that one to get us through the construction phase. Of course, we have the operations of the current ground and the new crown system that'll be sitting here that comes out as an expenditure. And then we have pay-go projects that we use to renovate the current Crown Center, plus some maintenance and other for the older and the new Crown Center. We have programmed that in here, knowing that the new Crown Center will have to have some renovations, right? They'll need a new roof. They'll need new seats. They'll need new carpet eventually. So we've had to program some of that into the future to capture it as well, knowing we have a new facility. So as you'll see, it remains quite healthy. Our coverage here is .5 because we're dealing with smaller numbers, and thus we need a little bit more. But right now, our cushion gets down to about a .7. That still leaves about $8.2 million to the bank in their fund balance by the end. That gives us a pretty good cushion to deal with any number of different scenarios. Obviously, the model has a projection of revenues and costs that we got from the, I forget the name, the CSL and the O B G people. They did the study a few years ago on the revenues and expenditures, so that's all in here. There is some net profit from the event center that's been identified in here, but I believe we have a good cushion that the net profits are coming quite as, you know, good as we think they are. We'd still be able to handle it. still be able to handle it. And remember, we're still using a five percent interest on this. As we get to issue this later this year, hopefully the markets will stick with us and we'll get more of that three to three and a half percent range. And this will come down, thus making the model better and giving us a little more cushion. But we feel very good about the one forty five, you know, a project and what the Crown Center model can accomplish. And we still have some cushions. It's pretty, pretty healthy.
Our charge has been, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, to make this model a little bit more, more in the fund balances, a percentage and so forth, to to give you some room so that we don't have to have general fund to step in. That that's been the goal. And we'll continue to have that goal year after year. Uh, in terms of, because it operates like an enterprise, we want it to cover itself, at least when we start with the model. And then we want to manage it as you see fit into the future, but under the current goal to make sure that this model is self-sustaining.
Commissioner Keith.
Uh, thank you. Okay, so just to clarify on here, this is based on a twenty year, is that what we're approved for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I I thought we were going back and forth. Is it twenty year?
Twenty year.
Okay. So you're, you're, I'm kind of surprised a little bit at the numbers of the Crown Event Center operations. They've consistently been at that three million for the last decade, as long as they've been there. We're going to be reducing that place down by two facilities. Was all this taken into consideration and the, the operation costs of the new facility? Because according to this, it looks to me like about three years in, maybe four years in, you're expecting a break even of, I'm looking at twenty twenty eight, June twenty twenty eight, you got eighteen, eighteen million coming in and then you have eleven dicks, the, the note plus six million, which is, my public school math tells me that's about eighteen million.
Yes, sir.
Um, so where are you getting your number? Look, I'm glad we're breaking even because right now it costs us a little bit of money. But I'm curious to where these numbers actually was at.
The two studies. So the new facility came from the two studies and the old.
Can I steal a line from you?
Go ahead.
Those are pre-COVID studies. And things have changed. Um, have they been, he says it all the time. Um, have they been updated?
Yes, yes. We, when we went through the models, when we talked with DEC on several occasions, we've updated the models.
Okay.
And I would say also with the facility and the newness of this facility and what it, how transformational it'll be for the community, I would be, that's probably a conservative number.
Hey, I'm as happy as I can. Y'all watch this now. In a couple of years, they're saying it ain't costing you any money for the Crown Council, you know, for all those big events. With about three years, we'll be breaking even.
Well, I mean, we just heard that, uh, we have two shows for Kevin Hart because of the demand. Just think, we have a new building downtown.
I'm with you.
And the demand that we'll have. Um, so it's going to be transformational. I think we'll have everybody coming from all over the southern part of the, of the state and the northern part of South Carolina.
We were told that. That's why we went to that, that, that operational venue of not a traditional performing arts center. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy the numbers are showing that. I just hope the actions show that because that'll be great for the community. Let me say one other thing about debt service. This is the more conservative model with the twenty year.
Yeah.
You'll see it's a level debt service, not level principal. That's more how you run an enterprise fund, is you try to levelize it for purposes of the revenues coming in. Uh, the manager has said to us, as we get closer and we look at interest rate spreads between twenty five and twenty year debt, right now they're not very big, then we'll make a decision. If that happens, while the debt will pay out longer, it will in the early years improve somewhat the cash flow.
Right.
And give some more room if indeed the operating cost and revenues change. Correct, Mr. Manager? That's what we talked through several times. So we're trying to be here again exceedingly prudent in here, but we'll build this out further. And as we get closer to the bond issuances, we'll be available. Certainly, we'll be speaking to the manager. And I want to say this to you, and this was not asked to be said. We have had multiple model meetings and in every one of them, the manager has been there, as has Brian. And so there's been a broad diversity of people who have looked at this model and I believe understand well this model, for which you should feel really good. Uh, he questions us, and that's a good thing. And I think the model has been learned well. I feel good about it. We are holding out there based upon facts as we find them, as we get more into this, some alternatives that will make some interactions with the model. But we wanted to start with the most conservative one.
Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Carlson. All right. Thank you so very much, Neil.
Yes, sir. We're pleased that you let us come.
Glad you came. Paying some money before you leave. That's something. That'll take us, Mr. Manager, to our health insurance plan.
Yes, up next, we have, um, the estimated renewal and recommendation. Um, wait a minute, I'm, I gotta get myself, just wait a few. Um, and so our representative from USI will go through the recommendation and, um, provide overview and answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Ed Borgman. I'm from USI. And, uh, as mentioned, we're going to go through the update. I think everybody was aware, we were here last month. Uh, we did a initial renewal and that was based on data through, um, November. And then with December and January claims, we updated those numbers and also want to get to the recommendations, uh, and continue the discussion that we had, um, in the, uh, earlier meeting in February. So just to level set, as we look at the claims in the additional months, so we're looking at a year-over-year comparison of the premium versus claims. And as you can see, uh, expected claim versus actual, uh, as you can see, for the two months that came in, so December of twenty three and January of twenty four, we're right on, uh, on top of each other almost as far as the actual claims, um, versus expected. So that is, um, you know, going to be factored into the renewal numbers, which, you know, will show you what that impact looks like.
Just for people, I think we, uh, we're online and everything. FIE is?
Fully insured equivalent. So that is the budget rate. So when we, we set a rate, it's called the fully insured equivalent. Yeah, sorry, we don't have the acronym spelled out.
That's okay. People, I just want them to know exactly what that is. So some, some of those acronyms, they're not sure about.
Sure. That's a good question.
Thank you.
So to update, so taking that claim experience, what we plugged into the model and you can see, so from a fixed cost perspective, you won't see a lot of changes because the administrative fee with Blue Cross is fixed. The stop loss, we did lock in at the original rate that was projected. Um, the one thing to point out, they are concerned, there's a couple claimants, one cancer and then also one child that is, uh, receiving ongoing treatment for autism that they've, what called lasered. So that additional liability is included in the calculation. And really where, where it went up is we saw the claim numbers. So as you look at the, the claims, when we looked at this last month, um, that, that number was, was lower. And what's driving that is really large claimants. We had a number of large claimants over a hundred thousand that came in for both months. And then we also saw a big uptick, uptick in pharmacy, which will lead into our discussion later, which we talked about, the GLP ones and the weight loss as well as the type two diabetes medications. So we'll, we'll talk more about that. So the overall increase at the, at the thirteen percent last month, when we did this, it was about twelve point two. So it ticked up a little bit. So this is the current plan and I think everybody's familiar that there's no changes there. One of the proposals and areas we were putting up for consideration for you all to consider is really introducing another option. We talked about this last month. So right now, when we look at the, the state, um, USI does a business with a number of municipalities and county type government groups similar to yourselves. And we see a lot of the similar groups offering choice. So what, what would you mean by choice? You're just giving employees, whether they, you know, they take the current plan, which is a low payroll contribution, or they have a option to, to go to a buy-up plan. And as you can see, the, kind of the difference is the in-network cost share is going to be much lower, but in turn, they pay more out of their paycheck. So it's really just a way to give people that utilize the plan, you know, a richer benefit. But we'll show you a little bit of how that would work. But ultimately it gives plan choice, which is, we know from an employee-based perspective, important. Um, whether, again, you're a high utilizer or you just want, you're not utilizing the plan, you want the, the lowest amount coming out of your paycheck.
What's the difference between the, I mean?
So, so cost-wise, you know, when we ask Blue Cross the models, the plan design's about nine percent, you know, overall. When, if you look at the fully insured equivalent rate for your current plan versus this plan, it's about a nine percent differential in the overall cost.
And so, um, you know, I talked about it last time on my weight loss medication for those. Um, and I see you got it covered at retail only. That's for everybody?
Right. So that's it. And that's leads to the next. So the other piece to this, besides the, the, the two medical plans, is looking at the coverage of those medications. And there's a number of things you can look at. And I think it's too early to be rash and say, we want to exclude that because they're, they're too expensive. But at the same time, looking to make it where it's a, um, a switch in the plan. So right now, the majority of those medications are being filled through the onsite pharmacy. And what, what the proposal would be is to still cover them. So employees still get access to them. The only difference is the cost share would be different.
Well, so I guess my, my, my question, I guess the, where I go is this, is that even as we're doing that lost weight medication, some people doing it for weight loss, some people doing it for health. So you tell me that based upon what claims I have drives my policy. So would we not want to cover, at least in our in-house pharmacy, those that are prediabetic and diabetic as opposed to just weight loss? So can we, can the plan look at the difference? Because if I can keep them, the weight loss keeps them out too, if, if, because it runs hypertension and everything else.
Right.
But clearly, the prediabetic getting to diabetic is going to drive my claim. So is that if, uh, if you've got the prescription and your doctor's saying you're prediabetic, diabetic, cover at the pharmacy, the weight loss go to the retail pharmacy? Can we do that?
Again, that's, that's a good question. So that, right now, Blue Cross, when we talk to them, is about switching all the GLP ones. But we can ask that if you can only just do the type two diabetes, still get filled through the in-house clinic and then the, the weight loss medications, which are, again, they're all in the same class. The difference is, is different strength of medications. So the Wegovis you've probably heard of, Zaxenda are the two big weight loss ones. Now Zepbound from Eli Lilly, that's, that's also popular as well.
Well, before we go there, I guess, I'm just one person. So it's whether the, the board, um, uh, would like to have them look at that.
I got a question.
Commissioner Keith, but all y'all to weigh in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so before I get down to that last part, the, the current and the proposed. So you're actually coming down on the in-network for family deductibles? Did I read that right?
So the, the proposed is, and it should be, the proposal is having two plans. So it'd be the current plus the.
Okay, so it's not one or the other?
No, no. It would be offering both. So this would, there's the current plan would stay the same with the exception of the, what we proposed on the weight loss drugs. And then the new plan would be that the richer plan offered alongside that.
Well, why, why are you going to? We, we've tried this before and, and then we had to hide the, the, the cards that you get and everything else. And it, it got, it got complicated because a lot of people just didn't understand what they were getting.
I didn't.
Um, what, what was the purpose behind? I know choice is always good, but what, what was the real purpose behind?
So really, again, it just when we looked at benchmarks and, and knowing that, you know, um, when we compare to similar type groups, the number, there's, there, you have one, one medical plan where a number of groups are offering a high deductible, a PPPO, and then also a buy-up. So, you know, this would be, you know, how we structured it and when we showed the contributions, we can show you that, is that it would be employee-paid. So it's not a cost to the county. So that if someone wants to buy up instead of, you know, paying lower payroll contributions, they're going to pay higher payroll contributions unless that's the doctor, when they use, when they use the plan. So that was the, you know, the, the concept to help, you know, pay for it. Because knowing, obviously, you don't want to increase your costs, but you still are offering a choice.
Yeah. And, and just, you know, since we're self-insured, I just wondered if everybody has done the actuary out that well to see that it's really going to move the needle that much, but.
It, it, and that's a very good point. Again, this is more of a, you know, because it's cost neutral, because the, you're not, the county's not contributing more for it. You're contributing the same amount for, for, no matter which plan they join, they're just paying the difference. It's more just the, you know, giving, you know, from a plan perspective.
Okay, so.
Choice.
Um, now I'll go down to, you know, everybody's heard about the, the, uh, the expense of these drugs that have come in. Um, I, I can't imagine that they're so new that nobody really understands the long-term effects of somebody being at a lower weight. Even us in the county have, uh, thresholds that you have to get screened each year. If your waist is below a certain amount or your blood pressure is, you get a lower deductible. Well, uh, you know, all, most of us that are a whole life is, oh, oh, between overweight and smoking, you, you're, you're a walking death trap, right? So, you know, hypertension, uh, digestive heart failure to a degree, of course, diabetes, which is very, very expensive to keep up. And I mean, there's probably just a long list of, of items that are caused by obesity or overweight. Is it short-sighted to say, and I realize you're not saying cut it, okay? So, yeah, like the state did.
Yep.
Right. But, but how short-sighted is it to say, um, you, you, you can fund me on the, on the front side, you can fund me on the backside, right? Um, so it, the, what I've always heard in my life is, you know, your last five years of life takes eighty percent of your, your cost and all that stuff. But if you're.
Last two years.
Yeah. Um, what, what last, was it seven years? Is that what it is?
I've heard last two years.
Oh, last two years. Okay. Actually, I'd heard that too, but I was trying to be nice. Are they seeing benefits to people being on weight loss drugs, being at a lower weight, not having to get as much care? So are we cutting our nose despite our face on something like this?
Very great question. I know everybody's probably familiar with what the state did. So the state's obviously just taking the extreme and saying, we're going to cut it. And I would tell you, based on our pharmacy practice, and we asked that same question because right now you are seeing, they are effective. People are losing weight, um, and they're, they're keeping it off. What we don't see yet is a, a return on the investment as far as lower claim costs, lower, you know, diabetic rates, lower obesity, which we know are those are two big drivers within the, the claims area in the county. So that, even though it's, it's been the last really year and a half, it's still.
Too early.
We haven't seen that return yet.
Right. But if we, if we cut it, we may not ever see that return.
Well, so this, and again, not saying there's a one, there's other answers certainly because when we talk to Blue Cross, you don't need to make it and then wait till next year to have the same discussion. We can come back to you in two months. We can come back to you in six months and give you the data and say, here's where we are now. And we'll show you, I think you may have saw the appendix. We have the claim data in the appendix. You can see that it's, it's ticking up. And that's the reason why we want to bring it to your attention.
Sure. And the last thing, what, what exactly does covered at retail mean? Because I've heard this stuff is very, very expensive.
It is. So the average cost is a thousand to fifteen hundred, depending on which medication. So it's, it's a range. But it, you know, that's per month for a thirty day supply. Um, and so from it, when saying covered at retail would just mean, because right now, over eighty percent of the drugs are going to fill through the onsite pharmacy, which these are very small co-pay, no deductible.
Right.
Um, by making this change, you'd introduce the deductible and then potentially a higher co-pay, which, again, is not going to keep anybody from taking it, but it might for those that are just doing it where it's borderline.
Right.
Then, then maybe that cost difference would, would steer it, you know, where, where they would think twice about it. Again, that, that's probably out of all the options because exclusion is the most extreme. That's probably another one, which would be.
So are, are you saying that a company county employee who is taking one of these would be responsible for up to a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars?
No, so the, most of drugs, so when you look at the benefit design, it's, it's a, the last year for specialty, typically these drugs are not specialty, even though they're very expensive, they're not, they don't technically fall under specialty medications. So a lot of them would still fill at the, at the seventy, seventy dollar co-pay. So a lot of them would still fill at the $70, $70 co-pay.
$70 co-pay after you've met the deductible?
Right.
Of only $150.
Yep.
So at the bottom line, somebody would only have to pay $75 for their prescription?
Well, you get the $150 plus rate and $70, $70 co-pay. So you need your upfront deductible.
You need your deductible though.
It's an annual deductible, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. I just want to make sure what this, monthly, no?
Yes, per person, right?
Yeah, per person, annual deductible, and your recommendation is, nobody's going to be paying $1,000 for their medication.
No, yeah, that, that, again, that was the, you know, again, they presented a few options, which we think, until we get more data, don't do anything extreme, but consider that as a, you know, kind of interim option until we have more data.
I imagine this is probably the biggest thing everybody in your industry is talking about.
I would tell you, you're not alone. So every other group we talk to, it's the same discussion, it's just different, you know, different employer.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Jones, you got anything?
Thank you.
Commissioner Faircliff?
Yeah, I think what you were saying a while ago about the diabetics, I don't think we need to change anything with that situation. Prediabetic, I don't know, I don't know what that is. I mean...
Well, you're obese and prediabetic, so if you're prediabetic, you're probably obese, but, but there's a difference. But, you know, I think that, and I hear when you're talking about $70, but to me, those that are prediabetic, diabetic, I want them taking this. And if $70, that extra, whatever it is, I think then you can keep those claims down going forward. That insulin and all of that's going to cost you more than what I'm going to pay on this right here. I mean, once I get them, if they get into that diabetic stage, they got to start taking that insulin and then even move forward, those claims are going to drive this even more. And I will tell you, I do understand it, because I know the managers had to do at least two budget revisions because of the cost of what this has been since the last time we met. So it is a high cost driver in the plan. But I think that, you know, at one end, we're talking to our employees, that we're doing these benefits and doing all this. So I just believe on that, that prediabetic, diabetic part, to keep them out of that plan that we at least cover that. If it's strictly for weight loss, then, you know, you pay the $70, that's cheaper than the gym, if you're going to the gym.
So keep, so keep prediabetic and diabetic the way it is.
For the pharmacy.
And for anything else, $70.
Yeah, it goes to the retail pharmacy.
We, and we will go back to Blue Cross and clarify that, because that is, you know, when they gave us the option, they can do this, they mentioned doing all GLP-1s. So let us, we'll come back, and we can get that fairly quickly, get that back through General and Brian.
One of the most costly, excuse me, one of the most costly expenses that relate to obesity or overweight? Obviously, diabetes is one.
Well, obviously, your whole musculoskeletal is also another. You'll see, typically, when you have obesity, you'll see that item, you'll see people that have...
Are you talking about like joint replacements?
Well, yeah, joint, you're right. So, heart disease, you know, obviously, again, like GLP-1s, your high-cost claimants, your, you know, we find our populations, a lot of them are very similar, you know, obesity, heart, cholesterol, cancer, you know, and we know in your large claims, that's also a cost driver. But, yeah, to answer your question, that, really, it's the heart and also, you know, the...
I think what everybody's dancing around here is, we don't want to pay for vanity drugs, but for medical, but it's something that's going to improve your life. And to your point, hip replacements and knee replacements have a lot to do sometimes with, you know, joint pain and...
Overweight, yeah.
And being overweight, and, you know, high cholesterol.
Eli O. I'm sorry.
You might just be old over it. That's a cost driver too.
And really, I'm fine with what you guys are talking about, I was just hoping that it wasn't. I believe some people appreciate this drug so much that they may stay with an employer. Somebody who works at the state, who is relying on this drug, that can't get it, may be looking for a job somewhere else, it does mean that much to some people.
That is very good. As I mentioned, there are controls, so they, for diabetes, you've got to have, be diagnosed as diabetic, and you also have to have taken metformin before you go to these drugs. For weight loss, you also have to have a body mass of X and higher, and then also have to be in a lifestyle program, you know, obviously, diet as well as exercise.
And the reason I said, because, and it's just because of what you hear, that in the retail market, you may or may not get your prescription filled, because of the demand from everybody.
Right.
I mean, that's the other part, that's the, that's the major problem I have with the diabetes and prediabetic. If you're diabetic and this is helping you be able to do that and do that, and you go, can't get your prescription filled, it becomes an issue. Then what do we do? And that's, that is the other flip side to that in terms of cost. And that's why I push this, because I think it's, that's a health-related thing, and we don't want to hurt that part.
No, it's a good point, and we have seen that off-label usage, because some plans don't have controls, excuse me. And as a result, diabetics can't get the medication, because it's being used off-label.
Right, right, yeah. So that, I mean, that's the issue that, yeah. So if you can bring that back, we won't make that change today, but from what I hear, from the consensus around the table.
Okay, got that. So just, I'll move through this pretty quickly, but, you know, we just, again, we showed you this last year, this continues, you see the cost share as it relates to the overall cost that the county picks up versus the employees, and how that's changed over the years. And then the proposal, so we have the current plan and the contributions, so we feel this at the 13% increase, and then what the impact is, overall impact to the employees, if they were, the plan goes up 13% in the overall contributions, that's the difference from an employee perspective, $316,000. And then the proposal to add the two options, so this would be the two plans to the right side of the screen in yellow, you'll see. So the current plan, and what those proposed increase would be at 13. And then, if you had a shift, and again, we just use a projection of 20% of the employees would migrate to the new plan, and what that difference would be, and you can see, so really, the difference in plan costs is being picked up, so there's higher employee contributions as a result of that, you know, that richer option. No change in the retiree, that plan is still projected at 5%. And again, we can, we have time to come back, because that is a January 1, '25 renewal. Delta dental, the same thing?
Well, if there's no, if there's no change, if we do it now, we get this, then '25, it might change.
So, yeah, so, right now, it's, you know, that is the increase, but certainly, there was options, we talked about some of the retiree options, but we'll hold off today as far as, that's not a, on the table as far as to make a decision today. And then the delta renewal is coming in at flat, there's no change there. So that would be a two-year rate for employees, we know employees pay that, but certainly a good benefit. So as we look at the things with consideration, you know, really, the ones that we had put out there is the, certainly the first one, the buy-up option. Looking at the pharmacy coverage, and again, we'll come back to you as, you know, if you need more information for you to make a decision on that. The medical plan contributions, so, you know, if we pass on the 13% that the plan increases, that would be the employee increase on contributions. And then, you know, we talked about the dental and the retiree, the retiree will come back with those options, but certainly, that is a, still a consideration. And this is just a summary of the three options. So I know we ran over, but certainly want to, any, any questions or...
Anybody got any questions? So, I guess, Mr. Manager, would be to the second two recommendations, which is the, do the employee premium increase and the plan choice?
Yes.
If I could get a motion for that?
I should approve.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Yes.
All right, and you'll bring back the medication?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not too bad. What's the average, as you're doing this around the state with other counties and municipalities, are they seeing that same kind of increase? Healthcare is always just a driver in everybody.
It's always a driver because of the...
The claims, yeah.
But, you know, your, your annual increase, you know, the medical inflation, you use, you know, what your claims go up by, and that, you know, is 8% plus on average.
Right, okay.
And it just depends on the additional, you know, cost driver, which, again, are very similar as far as the things we're talking about.
Well, and we do know, we talk about it quite frequently, the health of this community, which ends up being your claims and driving that. And if we can get the community healthy and get our employees healthy, it kind of helps with those costs and those claims and everything, so... Commissioner Faircliff?
Mr. Chairman, apropos of what you're talking about, if you recall, before we came up with all these GLP-1 drugs, if I got it right, we spent an untold amount of money trying to get obesity and diabetes-type claims down by putting in all this wellness stuff. We spent a tremendous amount of money. So this would be, this seems like a small investment, and, you know, not nearly as, we'll find out.
Right. It may be better than the wellness part, if you go to the, keep the drugs part. It reduces, no, I'm serious, if it reduces the, if it reduces the overall obesity rate and put on that health and all of that, then the question becomes, how much is, are people using, I guess at the end of the day would be, how do we determine whether the wellness program was more efficient, or whether these drugs put us in a better position? I don't know. That might be something that need to be studied from, which one of y'all know that? Look at her, she said, no, not me. I mean, that's Brian. No, I mean...
Just to summarize, there's a big microscope under this.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah.
If we're watching, if we're...
Right. Yeah, because, like I say, I hear if we do the wellness and the cost of what it is for the wellness, if you, if you take that out and put it on the drug side, it might, it might wash, because on the long term, which is what Commissioner Keith is talking about, if you can reduce those claims and that heart and that diabetes, then it helps with the wellness part.
Yeah, I would, just as a reminder, we did put in the diabetes program last year, so that's still early, still well, we'll update you the next time we're here, so that way you can see what, you know, the utilization right now is only in seven months, so still early.
Well, bring us some numbers, send with your feet. All right, thank you. All right, that would take us to item three, and that was Commissioner Jones with the resolutions.
I want to first start with the brief statement, if anybody please. All right. At least 31,272 Pakistanians have been killed, over 73,000 injured in Israel on Gaza since the war started in October 2023. Death tolls in Israel continues to grow weekly, and dozens continue to be held captive. Innocent women, children, and men are daily becoming malnutritioned, and also having serious health issues due to lack of water, food, and other medical supplies. There's a major, there is a major need of medical assistance, food supply, and a lack of shelter and safety. Our Pakistani and Jewish brothers and sisters, whether on United States soil or foreign soil, deserve humanitarian assistance and help from the greatest country there is, the United States of America. We must publicly call for a ceasefire to pressure Israel to allow more humanitarian aids into Gaza, along with a call to release hostages. We should know and remember that we should not be in support to send more weapons for this war. Humanitarian pause is not good enough. We should be in support for the most recent Senate resolution called by the White House Senators of the United States, as well as that in support of those that are in the House of Representatives for a ceasefire similar to that that's already in place. All bodies of government, from the top of the White House to the local government, should be in alignment, for this is not an affiliation party situation, this is a human rights and humanitarian rights matter. I am passionate about this, because I am from a military family, we are all here in a military community, who have family and friends that have been impacted by this in one way or another. I've also spoken to several individuals, families, organizations, that have these same concerns from their, from community conversations I've had with individuals, as well as groups. It is very evident, most US voters desire for the US to push for a ceasefire and support for the resolutions already in place from the Senate bodies and the White House all the way down. I thank you for this time. And so, one of the primary reasons that I'm asking that we show support for our community to take a vote to say that we are standing in support of a resolution, again, for reasons already stated. I just basically feel that we, as the commissioners and representatives for the community, have a due diligence to take a stand, and with this resolution, I would ask that, if it is passed, that we send this, for it to be known, our stance on this, that we send this in support to our United States senators, to our Congress, as well as to the House of Representatives, for this to be shared.
Is that your motion? You making the motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, is there a second?
We have.
Well, if we can get a second, then you can have the questions. If I can get a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion, because I haven't seen the resolution.
All right.
What did you say was done in DC?
Well, actually, the senators have already passed the bill in reference to a resolution to state that they want ceasefire and they have more aid to be given to those in Gaza. So I am requesting that we move forward to come up with a resolution to be in support of that. And so what they did in DC, they actually, the Senate voted, and a lot of, also, to be quite frank, as when I sent the email earlier, a lot of bodies of government in other areas, in Atlanta, Chicago and different places, California, they have brought this before their city council and their commissioners, basically for the same thing. Their communities are putting together a resolution to state that we stand firm for that of our United States government and our president. They just, of course, as we know, the State of the Union was just on here, and the president publicly announced, you know, a ceasefire, as well as the vice president. So what local government has been doing, if they're those that are in support of stating that we do need more aid when it comes to, of course, water and release of hostages, and food and medical treatment, they're doing like local resolutions and stating the same thing, to send forth to our House of Representatives and to our senators, to say that we are supporting this, basically, higher resolution.
Is that what was going on in Raleigh when they was doing all that picketing, getting all that, all that chaos in the chamber?
I do, yes.
Yes.
Last week.
Anybody else have a question? Comment?
Can, can we see the, well, there's no resolution yet, can we see a resolution? I mean, can we come back with a resolution?
Well, she's got a motion on the floor to, to basically, I guess, move to a resolution. So if the motion passes, we get to that point and bring back a resolution, but if it doesn't pass, then it dies here, so...
I'm bringing the discussion forth to see...
Well, no, you made a motion to do a resolution, so if they say, if this body votes no, then it's done, so... So the motion on the floor, are all those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Stewart.
All those oppose?
Voting opposition, Commissioner Faircliff, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Keith.
Your second resolution?
That was the only one that I had for.
You said something about a town hall or something?
Oh, I didn't see it on here. I want...
Well, it says resolution with an S, so you'd be just putting both under there.
Oh, okay. Well, since new information has been developed, I understand, I'm going to wait, see what comes from that meeting.
Right, yeah, because they have one coming up, that's why I sent you that. Okay, so you're going to pull that, okay.
I'm going to pull that, new information has developed, I understand.
All right, thank you. That would take us to consideration of agenda items, request for qualifications for solid waste gas services. Mr. Manager?
Yes, the next three agenda items will be presented by Amanda Beta, General Manager for Natural Resources. The first one is for solid waste gas services. The second one is for wallet quality services, and the last one is to accept a grant award for sediment ponds. So Amanda Beta, General Manager of Natural Resources, will answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, if not, I'll take a motion, which is to accept the selection of Smith-Garnett Incorporated as the preferred choice for the solid waste gas services, and grant permission to enter negotiation for detailed scope of work, cost of services, and prepare contract for approval at a future Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second?
It's been moved in second, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Request for qualifications for solid waste water. Mr. Manager?
Yes, this is a request for qualifications to handle the stormwater runoff from the landfill. Again, Amanda Beta, General Manager... Yes, um, this is our request for qualifications to handle the stormwater runoff from the landfill, um, again, Amanda Beta, uh, General, uh, General Manager of Natural Resources, will answer any questions you have.
All right, um, does anyone have any questions or comments, it was sent in the packet, if not, I will set, I accept the selection of Smith Garden Incorporated as the preferred choice for the solid waste water quality services, and grant permission to enter into negotiation for the detailed scope of work, cost of services, and prepare a contract for approv- uh, approval at a future Board of Commissioners meeting, if I can get that as a motion.
So move.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor? All right, that takes us to the resolution to accept the, uh, NCDQ grant award, Mr. Manager.
Yes, we received a grant award from NCDQ, uh, one million seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, um, three hundred and seventy-four dollars to repair our sediment ponds, uh, number two and number three, um, Amanda Beta, again, uh, General Manager for Natural Resources is here to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions, if not, I would ask to approve the resolution for the acceptance of the grant award of that medium seven, um, sixty-three, three seventy-four, and designate the county managers to authorize representative for the project.
So move.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what, you can't get much better than that, girl, I'll tell you that, the design build team selection for the government services.
Yes, as we, uh, start evaluating and designing the, the govern- new government services building, uh, we go, we wanted to first build a parking deck, and we want to award, um, the contract to build the parking deck, or design the parking deck, and Jermaine Walker, Director of Engineering and Infrastructure, will present this item, ask any questions you may have.
We got presents. I can go to the question.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, and Board of County Commissioners, uh, this item before you, uh, is for the selection of a design build team for the government services parking deck project, uh, we submitted the RFQ, the request for qualifications, uh, in November, solicitation period closed in December, uh, seven submissions were received, and through the county's evaluation process, four were selected for in-person, uh, shortlist interviews, and then, based upon evaluating those on a rubric of a possible two-hundred points, uh, the Salmon Creach Joint Venture was the recommended design build team, uh, with an overall score of one seventy-nine point two-five out of two-hundred, and staff is recommending, uh, that the board accepts, uh, this recommendation and move this item forward to the consent agenda for the March eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, and grant, uh, staff permission to negotiate a contract, which will be presented, uh, for approval at a future meeting, yes, sir.
And, and I guess, uh, anybody got any questions, uh, I got one or two, and that's because, uh, Miss Heather Skeens will tell you, I read the Rhino Times all the time, don't I, because I send them stuff all the time from there, and Salmon had a major issue in Greensboro, and they actually ended up terminating the contract, I think it was on the, um, jail, um, and so, um, didn't call anybody anything, I just read that in the, and, you know, when you're reading stuff, it's, it, there's a variety of reasons of why, but, um, have we kind of, uh, at least looked at that, I think they had, um, some issues over at Federal State also, uh, so, just, just trying to figure out, you know, and everybody has different rea- different, it could be a, any kind of varied, uh, and when you get into this stuff, it could be the boards, it could be change, I don't know, uh, but, uh, was that addressed, I don't know anything about any of these other ones, uh, but I do remember reading that, uh, in that old Rhino, Rhino Times, and you from Gilfinart, Mr. Manager's from out that way, he know the Rhino Times.
I think so, a little bit.
A little bit.
I, I'll just say that, uh, during that time period, uh, that was during COVID, and Salmon experienced some staffing changes at, um, the upper management level, and that may have had an issue with them, uh, being able to deliver on some of their, uh, projects at, during that time, based on the evaluation and talking with Jermaine, I, I don't have any concerns with Salmon.
They stabilized, you think they've stabilized that?
I think they've stabilized.
Okay, anybody else got any questions?
Well, I don't have a question, but I've got a comment, uh, I'm opposed to the project for this reason, uh, if we, if we wouldn't take up all of our parking with buildings, we wouldn't have to build this thing, so, on that principle, I don't think it's necessary, so, I will be voting against it.
So, okay, let me, I'm trying to figure out how to do this, because this is, um, can we, um, as a board, just hold off on this item, what else we got on here, and, uh, I think if we go in the closed session, uh, which will maybe provide some further information, I don't know that's gonna change your vote, Marshall, but it may give you some further context on some stuff, so, let's defer this for a moment to after our closed session item, and then come back to that, if that's okay with the board.
I would like more information, most of.
Yeah, today, we'll do that today, I mean, we're gonna have the closed session, and we'll come back to that item, if that's okay with everybody, it's just now, because that's the last thing on here, so, uh, we can do that, and then take a motion to go in the closed session.
I move the go.
I got one question on the monthly report, if you don't mind.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, so, in light of what we just talked about with insurance, um, is anybody doing the health insurance updates anymore, I mean, I know Vicki was doing it, is anybody?
Yeah, so we, we're doing it.
Okay, I, I, I'm curious, we're, we're in February, just finished February, we only got three more, March, April, May.
April and May.
Uh, four more months to go, where are we compared to last year?
Slightly higher, about four hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Slightly higher, about four hundred thousand dollars over the last.
And, and what does that mean in percentage?
I have to go back and recalculate, but it's about, uh, four percent increase.
Four hundred thousand is a four percent increase, was there anything that was, um, an anomaly?
No, it's just more activity, I mean, you know, we just coming out of COVID, uh, really getting over COVID, a lot more people, uh, employees are going, and then going to the, uh, doctor, and then the biggest driver has been the pharmacy.
So, we're including the pharmacy, I, I was just looking at overall health procedures, not pharmacy, what I'm trying to do is to find out if there's a, if there's gonna be any pattern that we can use as a threshold of saying, these are people going to the hospital for things, and has that, has that improved or disimproved, uh, the biggest fear for, excuse me, the biggest fear for me is, we go five years down the road, and we got all these weight loss drugs, and it hasn't moved the needle anywhere.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say we would need another year for that, that true analysis of that, uh, we don't have a lot of large claims right now.
Yeah, yeah.
The biggest thing has been our pharmacy.
Yeah, I, but, but if it is helping the other side.
I, I can evaluate if it's helping the other side.
Well, I don't, I'm waiting to see it yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, okay.
We can keep an eye on it, though, and start trying to track it.
Thank you.
But, I'll just, let me add that it's being really, really, it's really being looked at.
Because if you do them budget revisions all the time, you gotta look at it.
That'll, that'll wake you up.
I wake you up every time, I get a motion to go in the closed session.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor, uh, it's, uh, two twenty, I'll give you a couple minutes, because I got to the rest of the floor. And, uh, we're back open, so if I can get a motion to come out of closed session?
So move, second.
It's been moved in second, if we come out of closed session, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, that would then take us, back to, uh, uh, four D, which is the, uh, design build team selection for the government services parking deck, if I can get a motion?
Motion to approve.
If I get a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Council, and Commissioner Keith, in opposition?
And, and those opposed? All right.
Commissioner Faircliff.
I got a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I did a second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.